We'll call this meeting the order of the Virginia County Town Council meeting for Tuesday, July the eighth, we'll have an invitation and then the pledge.
I gotta get something to drink. Jay.
The Virginia Convention.
Absolutely.
All right. That's fair. Our dear Michelle, headline Father, come before you today, Father, we give you all the praise and honor and glory, Father, and the blessing you give us. Father, rest of all praise you for your precious son, to send down the cross that you made of eternal life. Father, as such, your blessing be with us this evening, and blessed are the citizens that make our council, let's all believe in the town. Father, give you all the praise and honor and glory, all these blessings, and your precious honor and amen.
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 To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Amen. Amen.
Okay, we, first thing we'll do is have the approval of the agenda, and have a motion to approve the agenda. You make a motion. You have a motion, does that sound?
Sir.
Mr. Truitt makes a second, all in favor, she and the father say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign, aye as heaven. Next is the approval of consent agenda, which is amendments from June twenty-fourth. Are there any additions or subtractions? If not, can I have a motion to accept it? So we need a second.
Second.
All in favor, she and the father say aye.
Aye.
Light sign, no. Yeah, aye as heaven. We don't have old business, but we got some new business, which would be budget amendment, and I presume the Colonel is going to take care of that.
Did you do all the agendas already, Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Do you approve all the agendas already?
Yes, sir.
Consent agenda and all that?
We.
Man, you were quick.
We did it all.
I tell you, I thought I had more time. All right, budget amendments, we have a whopping budget amendment of six dollars and fifty cents. So, one employee wages garnished, add it to revenue line, recovered costs. You can see the original budget, two hundred ninety-three thousand, fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents, adding six dollars and fifty cents to that, adding six dollars and fifty cents to an expenditure line in parks and parkage. That is the budget amendment for the new fiscal year budget.
Should we have the budget amendment before we have a motion to accept it? We have a motion by Ms. Karen and a statement by Jim. Uh, let's do, let's do a roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Yes.
The, uh, yes as heaven unanimous for that great big budget amendment. That keeps things kind of in order, I guess. The next item we have is citizens' comments. Ma'am, you have the floor, if you'd like it.
You have it.
Thank you.
Nothing wrong with this.
Now, you bound to have some good stuff or bad stuff to report if there. Nothing's getting done, everything's getting done.
Maybe something good, Father.
Everything's fine.
Good enough.
Big street.
Little bit big street. It's getting there.
Trying, we're trying to do better. And hopefully we are. We have next, the police chiefs report.
Well, Mayor, I mean, busy time of year for everyone with, uh, everyone's out, it's warm finally, and, uh, a lot of officers on vacation though, during this time, so we run kind of short, but other than that, um, like to let everyone know that, uh, our investigator, current investigator, Chris McCroskey, he, uh, he's been with us twenty years as of July sixth, so it's a big milestone in his career.
That is, that's, that's great. But we gotta look out, we got twenty. Hopefully he'll say more.
Hopefully.
Cause he does a good job. Of course, our officers do a good job. I see them out helping people all the time, it, it, it's really amazing how quick they are to help somebody. And if, uh, you act like you got some sense, you're okay, but if you don't, they handle that real well, very well. Better than I could have. I, I, I don't believe you could make correct Bradshaw man. I really don't think, cause that guy was all over him in his face when he just said, now, babe, calm down. I mean, it was great. Uh, well, we don't have an attorney, I guess he, uh, didn't want to tell. So next we have the town managers' report.
Yeah, Mr. McGrath, did you have him to day off for today? Uh, my report, uh, so I did receive a call yesterday from Delegate Moorefield on the flood assistance measures that the Commonwealth has passed. There is disaster recovery flood monies to the tune of twenty-five million dollars that was passed by the Commonwealth and the governor's budget, I believe. Of that twenty-five million dollars, I believe eighty percent of that's been earmarked for Giles County and, uh, maybe another county. And twenty percent of that money, I think will be available to Tazewell County and therefore the residents of Bluefield. So if I did my math right, that comes out to around, uh, six million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars will be available. So that pot of money, I'm due to have some additional guidance on how individuals will be able to apply for flood assistance. And I know Delegate Moorefield, maybe, uh, and Mr. Hatworth on, on advertising for that, and how to put that out to the residents and how they can apply for that. And that can cover expenses that were not recovered and the flood damage from Helene and the flood in February. I, I believe he said that could pay up to fifty percent of some of their losses or their damages. So this will be a significant, uh, piece to people that had significant flood damage and did not receive any significant reimbursement from the FEMA or something like that. So we have, when the, the program and how to apply for the program comes out, we have to make sure, the town has to make sure that we let the residents that received, that have had heavy flood damage understand how to apply and how to, uh, get in the queue for what I believe to be a portion of what I, I believe, a portion of that twenty-five million. There's a second part of that, which deals with flood mitigation measures. We, the town, can apply for that. And we are. We already have, you all, last time, passed the resolution, we are really ahead of the game on that part of it. Thank you for that resolution in the last meeting. The application for the hundred and ten thousand dollars for planning grant through Cumberland Plateau to DHCD. Uh, DHCD will be the one to administer out this flood mitigation measure money. And again, we should be hopefully pretty fast in the queue to get that planning grant application in. I anticipate that grant being submitted tomorrow, Wednesday. And again, Delegate Moorefield and I, uh, discussed that, followed email about that today. I anticipate submitting that tomorrow. So that will be stormwater infrastructure, and that grant is a planning grant, hundred and ten thousand dollars. A hundred thousand dollars of that applied toward the planning for the stormwater infrastructure that we're looking for along either Beaver Pond Creek or the Blue Stone to help the residents in the town and the businesses in the town. To at least make us more resilient. As you know, we have trouble with five-year storm events and to help elevate us to ten or twenty-year storm events. I think that's, uh, one of the best things we can do. The, the next piece of that is, we were, we've been working hard over the last year or so on the regional hazard mitigation plan. That has been commissioned by Cumberland Plateau as it's regional. And we submitted a bunch of information for that, multiple revisions, X, Y, and Z, it's over nine hundred pages long. Uh, that is nested with this planning grant and the stormwater infrastructure that we're trying to get accomplished here. Next council meeting, I will ask for a resolution on our approval or endorsement, I guess maybe the right, better, better term, endorsement of the hazard mitigation plan. So in your emails, probably tomorrow, you'll probably see a link to this nine-hundred-page document. You can feel free to read that if you would like. There are only obviously portions of it that deal with Bluefield. Matter of fact, I think I will save you the pain of the nine-hundred-page document link. And I will just grab a few of the pages that are pertinent, there's a few charts and tables that list out some of the specific hazard mitigation pieces that we're looking for here along Beaver Pond Creek, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll just snapshot those and send those to you. I think the rest of it is just too cumbersome, approximately. These are the foundational documents needed, of course, before we go after any of these grants or any of these infrastructure, we have to prove that we've done our homework and that these plans were approved and that they are in existence and that the monies in the future and the grants in the future and the projects in the future tie back to these resiliency measures and mitigation measures. And I think we will have all our ducks in a row for the future with these applications and these grants based on the work we did in this hazard mitigation plan. So when the residents ask, what have you done? I do hesitate to say it may not look like very much out here. Over moved a few trees, we cut a few this, or did a few that, or cleaned out a few drains. The sad part is, is that a majority of the work has been trying to line up all the documents to allow us to receive the large grants, to receive the money we need. To fix North College Avenue, for example, we will need somewhere around five hundred thousand dollars. This planning grant may help with that. The planning grant may help with the five to six million dollar stormwater retention pond we're gonna seek at the base of Loleo Park or Sibi Park. Uh, to help tame Beaver Pond Creek. Or the retention ponds that we're looking to install in the Winter Creek subdeveloping. We already have some engineering work on those. All of that is really to help tame Beaver Pond Creek and the flow as it gains momentum through downtown. I've also let a contract out for mitigation measures for tree removal, debris removal, and widening or helping to clear out the stream and return it to its original banks along North College Avenue to ease the pressure on that fail-retaining wall. And that should, uh, you should see work occur down there at the end of July, and that contract is around nineteen thousand dollars. So, uh, on one hand, you will start to see some work executed along with our normal work of keeping storm drains clean and keeping water flowing. And on the other hand, you'll see new work being accomplished. And then behind the scenes, you see all of these documents and planning grants trying to come to fruition so that we can go after the actual engineering and actual big projects. But again, the residents probably won't see that or understand that necessarily. So it's a hard message to get out there because if it rained tomorrow, the same houses would flood that flooded during the hurricane. I don't, I don't know how to combat that except with what we're doing. Any questions on those, that process? Okay, um, IDA, Mr. Dave Bowers has submitted his letter of resignation. I think for the correct reasons, uh, really personal in nature, so I'm gonna articulate those here. If you know Mr. Bowers, I think you feel free to reach out to him. But, uh, family, family matters are precluding him from being able to attend the IDA meetings and he therefore, based on the IDA's charter, is not to attend the meetings at a frequency required and therefore has submitted his resignation. The IDA met today and they accepted his resignation as a, as a group. And I think for the town council, it is not necessarily to, I don't think to accept it, but to acknowledge that he is resigning from the IDA, and has resigned from the IDA. However, now we will have a vacancy on that, and this is where the town council now has an important role to fill the vacant seat. So we have, uh, some names from the previous iteration of vacancies, we have names that are out there, if there are other people that you would like to ask to be invited to join the IDA, I would say that we run a fairly truncated process. And the council perhaps try to run an executive session at the next meeting in two weeks and try to come to deliberation on the appointment to the IDA. That appointment would be to fill Mr. Bowers' seat. Therefore, since you just reappointed Mr. Bowers, I believe it was for a four-year term. I would have to confirm that, and we would verify that for the next meeting. But the person that you all appoint, I believe, fills the vacancy, and I believe it is for a four-year.
But they don't fill the vacancy of chair?
That is correct, it would just be to fill the vacancy of his seat.
And the board.
And then internally, they will, uh, cast a, uh, a, a reorganization for the, uh, for the chairman and vice and potentially treasurer position depending on the situation. So if that meets, you know, your intent, I asked the IDA today if they would have any additional names that they would like to submit for consideration, to please submit those to Lori and myself, so that we could pass those to you all so that you could have those names, if there's someone that you all would like to see. Again, uh, we can plan for a quick executive session, I don't have any other executive session items for next meeting as of right now. So if we plan for a quick executive session, you can deliberate on a name for the IDA at the next council meeting. As another update, the solicitation is either in the paper or should be in the paper this week for the demolition of the next fifteen houses for our ongoing cleanup effort of the town. This is our phase-two effort. I don't have the list of the addresses with me today, but I think I provided those to you prior. If you would like to know those addresses, I'm happy to resend that email out with those, those addresses. The addresses will also be in the paper of this solicitation. Uh, as you know, from phase one, we demolished nine of the ten houses updated. And this time, we have fifteen houses on the list, I believe two of the houses will come off the list. Either they will be repaired and come off the condemned list. And then we'll have to see if we can fund the remaining with the amount that we had set aside in the budget of a hundred and ten thousand. So we'll have to see what the, uh, quotes come back in for the solicitation for the demolition project. The twenty-four, twenty-five budget is now passed, and it's in our rearview mirror. Uh, I have some documents to send you, uh, in your email was our LGIP numbers. Really, for the last year, I think I'm very happy with the LGIP numbers. Tried to lay out an explanation of those, um, you know, our interest total alone, I think, was very good, over a hundred and, uh, forty thousand dollars or something like that, in interest alone from our savings accounts, so I'm very pleased with that. With the, with the amount of money that we shuffled around, really, we put quite a bit of money into the LGIP accounts and the savings accounts, I'm very happy with that. Just shows an upward trend of our, you know, fiscal plan, our capital reinvestment projects. The right money got, I think, into the right places. When we say we're gonna reinvest into a, uh, trash truck for, you know, three or four years purchased down the line, we can pay cash for it. We won't have to take a loan. We said we were gonna do it, we budgeted for it, and then we're actually able to move the money from checking accounts to the savings accounts. We did the same thing for Chief Gunter, in the event that an SRO grant should dry up and go away, we're able to move ninety, seventy-three or ninety-three thousand, I don't remember the exact number, a good quantity of money set aside into the chief's savings accounts in the event that an SRO should go away, so that we have at least, uh, a rainy day fund set up that we can cover the SRO School Resource Officer in the event the, the grant funding dries up. So I think those are good, sound financial investments, and those accounts are earning a good amount of interest as we designate. As far as our budget closeout goes, uh, the audit, auditors have been here already, we've been sending the auditors information and money. I'll be sending out some of our closeout documents to you all if you wanna review that. Uh, the crib notes version is, I believe, every department in our general fund did not go in the negative for their budget, which was all the budget amendments that you all passed in the last two meetings. Thank you again for doing that. The water department, we knew would be in the negative, I believe in the previous budget, they were about fifty thousand dollars in the red. This year, I believe they're about thirty thousand dollars. Some of that change was due to you allowing me to increase the budget, uh, I'm sorry, the revenues four percent for the last few months of the fiscal year. And now with the new budget and the eight percent going on, I believe again, we'll be easily able to make up that thirty thousand dollar deficit and get the water fund back on track and not be in a, in a negative for, for becoming, or barring any exceptional, you know, unforeseen incident. The pool, of course, with the heat, the pools have been knocking it out of the park. I had, uh, on the fifth of July, we had a record attendance at one of the pools, two hundred and seventy-nine people throughout the day, not at one time, but a total attendance for the day. So I think that has broken all the records that have been kept on file. Final note here, I have, I don't know, a couple moments, farmer's market is continuing on Saturday. This Friday is a cruise night on Virginia Avenue between Margaret's and New Graham Pharmacy. From five PM to nine PM, again, the East River Street Rod Association, so Virginia Avenue will be closed down. Margaret's is anticipated to stay open late. Again, seafood, sea, 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 the seafood is now open. And asking the businesses to stay open later and for the foot traffic to be there, and I hope the weather holds. And it can be another good event, we had a large turnout last time, more foot traffic downtown, more people visiting our shops downtown. And, and I hope it's another good event. We had good, good positive feedback from last time. Field Fest, well-attended, last, um, uh, from the third, I think that was a good event. Next Field Fest is August seventh. And finally, uh, survey, so if you have not seen, uh, on social media, there is a survey out there, this is part of that study that we're doing with Bluefield West, so it's on our website, uh, it's on the Facebook pages, and I think we sent a text message out. But this also is, this is called a QR code, Mr. Mayor. And if you, if you wanna use this, this will take you to a survey, and this lets us know what the town needs, what the town should look like in the future, and helps us in that. This has been available now for about a week and a half or so, I think, and we've had two hundred and sixty-some responses so far. So a fair, fair amount of responses, actually. And I have about ten more of these, hard copies of these, in our office, so we at least have two hundred and seventy or so responses. So I invite you all to make sure you take that survey and let us know, uh, you know, there's, I don't know, fifteen or twenty questions on there, what should Grand Lake Park look like, what should this look like? How you view these different things in the town, you know, different, different ideas, different things, so help guide the master plan that we're looking for here, so. I encourage you all to take that survey, uh, only takes about, you know, less than ten minutes. And I think that's all I have for tonight. Barring your questions.
Anybody have any questions? Want to give a report? Uh, Lori's way ahead of me. Do you want us to go on to council comments, or do you want us to open it up? Since we had a short meeting, we were going to discuss projects that are going on in town, what you'd like to see happening in town, very soon. Should we do that first, and then at the end, the council comments? So I guess at this time, it's kind of off the cuff, if you just wanna ask. And I'll, I'll, let you have, whatever, if you wanna ask what's going on, what, what's happening here, what's happening there. I will say, if you haven't been to the seafood place, oh my God, it is good. And you're lucky to get into it. We were there last Wednesday night, luckily. He told the little girls that, that they could order for about fifteen or twenty minutes, cause he had so many. Whole place was completely full, outside was full. And we got our food like in seven or eight minutes, which was really good. But they had people lined up all the way to the door, like fifteen or eighteen people waiting, and I, I have not heard a negative comment, now maybe there are some, but I have heard. We'd be there three times, and if you like seafood, that's, that's a good place. And it ought to help us tremendously with the meal stamps, because they're not nice enough in August, they're meals. And, uh, I would say it's gonna help a lot, a whole lot. So, I'll talk about that one, and, uh, the one thing that you see in our papers, Colonel put out for bid, the amendments to the bridge we've been driving by for about twenty-seven years. And, uh, Colonel, I believe when this started, Truitt, you can help me with this, we had a bridge quoted as wood, so wood bridges that arch like this. The bridge and installation, the whole nine yards was eighty-eight thousand dollars. The only thing we had in paint extra was for the crane that lifted it up. Well, kinda fell by the wayside. We had an individual in town that thought that it would rot down and fall in the creek. Same kind of bridge that they had in Gatton Park, same bridge, and it's been there about thirty years. Lots of traffic going over it all the time. I wasn't worried about foot traffic, Karen, nothing, I thought this would got car traffic. So we decided to go with that, steel. We own the steel, we've got the steel stored out at the steel place, I guess you'd call it. We owned the steel, we got the steel stored out of the steel place, I guess you'd call it, and we're ready. Except we need the abutments done, and I think the price, he only got one bid, just the abutments. That's not putting the bridge on it, finishing up, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Now, I will say, I'm all for us to figure out how we're gonna come up with the hundred, probably two hundred or better additional. Colonel, I don't believe that included the concrete stuff that went across the bridge, did it?
It didn't, it's all, all the concrete.
Oh, okay, so I guess one of our big discussions is, now I wanna continue with it, I think, I'm not gonna speak to this tree. If we wanna continue with it, because it's a very needed object, getting across that channel, because the people walking all the way around, I'm law purges and things like that, and it's in the rocks. They can't do it, and it'll look really nice. If you're all on board still, maybe we need to discuss and talk about how we're gonna come up with the mon, with more money. If it's gonna take more money, get that rest put in there. So the Colonel has stopped the project, 'cause he don't have money, you know, he just backed off, and said, yeah, go ahead. We're at four hundred and seventy, aren't we? Are, are we about, well, I don't, how much was the steel and all? It wasn't, 'cause we had a hundred and thirty budgeted.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna, I don't recall exactly. I would say we've spent, we, we have probably spent around fifty thousand for the farm, meeting, meeting site.
So we've still got.
I don't even worry, is it, I mean, I'm just looking for you.
Where the parking lot for the seafood restaurant is, across the street.
Yeah.
That rock, it starts there and comes across the channel to the, to the farmer market.
Okay.
We've been talking about this a long time, haven't we, Jim, for over a year?
A long time.
Forever, and we had it bought two or three times. I mean, didn't we, Jim? Yeah, we thought it was, just gonna put it up, it's long for a car payment. And, and we would ask, and we never did get answered, that, no, we're not. And then, when one of our residents made a big time presentation, that followed the current, brought away, council decided to hold. Actually, the gal, bought the steel and sent it to Bristol, I believe, that a gal, and I said, is that correct, Colonel?
No, the galvanization costs too much, the transportation costs too much, instead we have an epoxy coat, epoxy adhesive.
And it sounds, the old platinum?
Is this to drive off a car cross?
No, 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 walkway.
Oh, walkway.
No, it is, I think it's four foot wide, it's something like that, approximately. And if I'm going off of memory, about in the middle, it turns into a circle, has some seats on this side, and some seats on this side. And, you know, it may sound like a waste, it may sound like, well, why in the world would they do that? If you go down there for any of our events that we have, especially the auto jamboree, a lot of older people down, and they, they can't, they just can't walk through those grapples and stuff. I mean, it's pretty tough, and it's a long walk all the way around for them, so that's why we decided to put a bridge.
Is the parking lot there that is grapples, that the city area?
Yes.
Where, where is it not paved?
We can't, it's in the flood zone, and we'd have to put permissible paper down, that's two or three hundred thousand dollars. We had that plan when they built the ice walls and all.
Yeah, I was always wondering how come it wasn't paved.
We had it, we had it on the agenda and all the due and permissible papers, and.
Is that for the runoff, so it doesn't run permanent water into the river?
Yeah, it's gotta go in the ground.
I mean, is that what they're worried about, is if it?
I think it was, but we couldn't.
Well, the FEMA restrictions are that those parking lots cannot be impervious surface.
Yep, and it was super expensive, like two hundred and some thousand dollars. And it was, and that was for the bridge, I mean, that's after we put the bridge down. And I believe Charlie Stacy, when he was with the board supervisor, even agreed to try to get like thirty or forty thousand dollars for us, if we can do it. Well, we, we couldn't do it, I mean, it's just, and that was only on one side. We needed to do the farmer market side also, and it, it's pretty dang on expensive. Now, with his grants and things that are going on, maybe we get some kind of grant one of these days that would allow us to do it. Well, they call it, not streetscaping, paddle did it, what, what do they call that? Something where they dug right in, in the half, half.
Well, they did a main street.
Main street, main street, some, and.
I think there are options for, you know, funding for the future. It is not in our budget, we do not have it in this year's budget, so it would have to be additional monies that we seek to find.
One last question on it, so we already bought the place that's called the bridge.
We had the steel for a year, I bet, hadn't we?
So it's getting somebody to put it across, and that's, that's.
I'll tell you about them. Brad Ayers was the engineer. And he's the one that designed everything and told us how much it felt cost. He talked about about a hundred thousand dollars.
Was it one company that has?
There was only one that bid on it, now, there might be a dozen out there, but I don't know who it was, but one company, if you opened the bid, there was only one bid submitted.
I wonder about me reaching out to someone else, since we've already got the metal or steel bought, and seeing like a waste that's set there, you can't.
It's, it's a, that steel's, it's a high.
Would you back to Brad and ask him, you know, if it could have, I mean, what, what else could?
I don't know what Brad's doing now, I don't know if he's still a business, I don't, he is still a business. I mean, I don't know anything about, he occupied the building that burnt that, from that vessel. And he also was out that old platinum building where the steel was located, but I think somebody bought that building.
Yeah.
So, and I, I'm presuming that they're just got set aside, as long as that thing is, how long would you say it is, eight hundred feet?
It's, I think it's sixty-three feet.
And two big pieces of steel, I think, about that tall, it's gotta be in the way, I would think. And, and I don't think we want them to deliver it down there and stack it where the farmer's market is. I think we need to decide the, how we're gonna come up with the money to, to finish the project, which is.
We'll talk to another company, you know, it just seems excessively high.
I, I thought so too, because, you know, two, two abutments not.
Need a crane.
Really, they didn't, we don't need a hole, put the rebar in it?
That's what I'm thinking, it's one unit, but I just cannot, I don't agree.
I, I, when he told me that, I thought, Lord have mercy, what are they doing? And that price does not include the crane to set the steel, that's just pour the concrete and have it to where the steel can be set down on it. And then, there has to be a contractor, am I right, Colonel, that puts the stuff on the bridge where they pour the concrete, or is that all in the concrete job?
That was all in the concrete.
Oh, okay, so, and that's a lot, that's a lot of work. The, the two abutments, I'm sure they're not a hundred by a hundred, but I would say they're four, five feet deep and seven, eight feet wide, I don't know. And then put the steel on there, so they pour the concrete on top of it. I thought it was an awful big project for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I thought, he didn't say anything, but I thought, I don't know about that, I thought steel would help more than that, I thought, we bought it. It was in the time when steel was sky high, was, Colonel, I mean, it was bad. And somehow we got it, I don't, I don't know who dropped the ball, Brad dropped it, I don't know. I don't know, he's, he did the engineering, we had the drawings, and my understanding was, he was gonna supervise being the engineer. The abutments, again, make sure that the holes line up and all that kind of stuff, is what I presume now. But I guess it's just a point of pass to the council. Do we want to proceed? Don't wanna proceed, there's no use in doing anything, but, but we'll still, and after, I would like to see us proceed, that's mine.
I mean, I wouldn't mind proceeding, you know, just, you know, just maybe talk to somebody else, I mean, another company, but do this, I mean, I just can't believe it would be that much.
Who wants to come to the town, do you know?
I do, the bid that we received was from Bobby English Construction.
Bobby English? Gosh, that surprises me that Alex St. Clair has a concrete company now, and I called him, and he said, we'll be there to bid. Well, he didn't. Alex Land, Landers Construction, DCI can do it, but I'm sure they got a lot of work going on.
Yeah, there's multiple companies that could do that.
Oh, yeah.
That have crews.
Those crews are running any kind of concrete, they're baking concrete, they've got them, they're all Hispanic, they'll have the things in, they're in Kansas.
Yeah, you could probably, it'll work.
They're, no, 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 that'll never work, that won't work, my, no.
Well, the next option is to put the solicitation back out and see if there's any additional contractor moving to apply.
You don't think about that?
I think it's great, I think it's free.
Okay, let me ask this question. So a hundred and seventy thousand, I doubt that he's off a tremendous amount, but say, let's say he's forty thousand dollars too high, but still a hundred and thirty. And we don't have a hundred and thirty to recover.
We have not budgeted anything for the bridge.
Yeah.
Well, we, we can just come back at another time, we'll watch our, we'll, we'll take, we'll stay, I think that's what we do.
We've got a little bit of money left from the original, so we probably need conserved the another seventy, eighty thousand, you think, Colonel?
No, to be clear, there was zero money for the bridge.
But we budgeted a hundred and thirty last year, right?
And that went away June third.
So what we paid for on the steel, the remainder balance money did go into a savings account for the bridge?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so we're, we'll have figured out a way.
We'll just have to, yeah.
We'll just have to let him, and that, and more, tell us what to do. I don't think something as small as this, that we should go get a big loan. I mean, why do we wanna pay interest on something like that, although I'd like to see it get done, and I'm sure others would like to see it get done, especially people using. So do you all want to just have the Colonel to explore it and come back with some ideas on how we'll pay for it? Okay, maybe.
I mean, it would make the downtown look, look brighter.
It would, it would help, it would help a lot, a whole lot, though.
Yeah, it would be nice also to try to get what paid for, as a state kick in, and I, I don't know, it was suggested.
Well, we can, we can challenge the Colonel to just more bids, and then.
There's plenty of companies out there that could do.
I would think, and then possibly figure out how we would pay for it, you know? Because every penny in the budget for the year we're in right now is accounted for. And as we have said in the past, we can do anything we want. You need a hundred thousand dollars, get some, but then we're gonna cut it, you know, because the money's already budgeted, so you may have to draw from Peter to move it over. Or maybe we get a grant, or maybe a foundation gives us money, I, I don't know. I would just think it'd be best with Colonel to explore that instead of us. We don't wanna be out here trying to negotiate money and ask, is that a fair statement, Colonel?
Yes, I think that's fair, I mean, my analysis would be that we should, assuming that Bobby English Construction was even, let's assume their bid was accurate, and any other solicitation that came in was roughly the same amount of money. I do think that we should seek other people's money for this, and if we can secure somewhere in the neighborhood, a hundred to a hundred and, I mean, anything better than a hundred is great. If we could secure a hundred thousand dollars of other people's money, I think we could execute the project.
Okay, so in other words, it's not made.
Yeah, exactly.
We're, we're still working on it to, and this project's been going on for a long, long.
It was a little bit more than that.
Yeah, yeah, Colonel, Colonel inherited this, uh, big time, and his buddy is the reason we're going with steel instead of the wood. We have a wood bridge bought from some company down in Tennessee, and the only thing left, they were doing everything. We just had to pay for the crane to let it get in there. And I remember some council meeting, and Jim said, oh, fine, we're gonna get this. Well, we ain't there yet, all the trees, still working on it. Still working on it, so that's, that, I'll start with that, and so what, what else? What, what else are your overall ideas? What do you wanna see done? We've got all these things that we are doing.
Why, I don't know where we're at with sidewalks.
The two sidewalk projects, I mean, those are administered through VDOC, right? So those were templated to begin in twenty twenty-six, so those will start for next year. We have a ten percent match, that money was already set aside, that's six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So the overall project is over six million dollars, which are going to be South College Avenue, sidewalk, and the Valleydale sidewalk project. So VDOC is in their design work, their design phase. You can see engineer tape and test holes being dug along South College Avenue. Those are all as precursors to that project, for them to know, it was part of the design work, foundation for the expansion of sidewalk and South College Avenue. So there are pieces being accomplished right now, but the heavy work is not scheduled to begin until twenty twenty-six.
You have started that little piece, kind of end, kind of, there's a little piece, and that's it, would that be completed?
I don't know, I don't, I don't know anything about that.
Well, it's a good idea, that one small piece.
If you doesn't come here, the wind will round you up, so if you stop, you stop. Now, that project will be done by VDOC.
It's administered by VDOC.
Yeah, that, they'll oversee all the contractors' account and all of that.
Those going to sidewalk project, those going to streets that are seeding sidewalks, I don't know about any sidewalk project.
Looks to be like, I'm getting a lot of phone calls, and people see me ask, the projects that are going out there are four sixty? For the life of me, I can't see that's going any way, I can't.
I, I didn't, I've never been. I, I didn't, I've never seen a first two, three dollar stack. I, I can't either, I cannot believe they've done this.
It's like, I'm beating on a project.
I'm, I'm blowing out of my mind with that.
When the VDOC people were here.
How, I've, I've never ever responded.
Uh, yeah, I didn't either, and when the VDOC people were here, I said to the guy, the simple solution is change the red line, make it a green line to turn, and that'll help. I mean, people getting hurt there a lot, and thought, here they got it, they see it yellow blinking.
Flashing yellow.
And they think, ooh, I got the right one.
I, I.
Been a lot of people killed, a lot of people, several motorcyclos.
Yeah.
Have been killed down, down there, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that had for years.
But that, that is, uh, we didn't have anything to do with that, did we, Colonel, that's their baby.
When I looked into that, they did a, uh, they had, uh, town halls and public hearings on that in twenty twenty three. So that was before I came here to the town, so I was not involved in that project, not as an excuse or a cop op, which was before my time. Um, I assume that there were public comment periods, uh, but it took that long between the public comment periods in twenty twenty three to the execution in twenty twenty five.
Cause the guy said to me, well, we have flashing green lights all over Virginia. I believe it's the only good I've seen, the truth is, I don't see any in Rutherford. I, I don't think I see any in Wethel. I, I don't know where he's talking about, but we've had some pretty bad accidents there, but anyway, uh, the sidewalks, and we're coming along pretty well with our, uh, oh, I know one item. You all got an email from the Colonel on the new signs, the signage. I think it's fabulous, I think it looks fabulous. And that will be the type of signage that'll be throughout town. Uh, are you all proud of that, Colonel? I think we just tell him to
Well, maybe.
Continue on with that, cause that's, that's very professional, I believe, it looks really nice.
That's been a very long project, uh, we've been working on that design contractor for a long time. So I, I think I'm happy with what we have now, I mean, it's style, and we budgeted, I believe, forty thousand dollars for those signs. That sign that you saw was on the order of about four thousand dollars, so that allows us to get about ten of those signs to, to go.
Didn't we get a nice donation too today?
Uh, correct, uh, the, uh, Thompson Charitable.
Foundation, Thompson Charitable Foundation.
Thompson Charitable Foundation is contributing to a portion of that sign. And, uh, that's, that's gonna aid us and allow us to, to get more of those. Uh, the next sign up, uh, we, we may receive some donations for one sign for Finn Castle. And then to get after a wayfinding grant for the directional signage as soon as we come off four sixty. It's shopping this way, and down this way, and whatever, and these things, so. I'm very excited, I hope that within the next year or so, we can have a lot of new signs, uh, within the town and within our, uh.
We also applied for, uh, DHCD's Community Vitality Grant, which you mentioned Main Street earlier. We are in the Main Street program, but we're in the bottom tier, it's called the Explorer tier. Um, so we haven't advanced to the next level yet, but because we are in the first tier, the Explorer tier, we were eligible for the fifteen thousand dollar grant to apply for. And we also applied for signage as well for it. So where we got the eighteen thousand from the Thompson Charitable, we could most likely get another fifteen from DHCD for being in the, in the Main Street program.
That would be great.
Mm-hmm.
Just teamwork, to get somebody push it to the button, to receive this funding and all of this. And that's, I think that's great, that's, that's what we do, and, well, we don't, they seem like. So the one for the, uh, the playground, it has already been approved and they're making it?
Yes.
So it'll be up this year?
Oh, well, we hope to have that ready for the eventual dedication unveiling or grand opening of Park View X Park, and we're ready to execute the playground portion of that.
Have you all been by the playground room? I've never seen so many kids visit there, I parked over in Park, and I went over ten or fifteen minutes, and there was, there was at least twenty, maybe more of that.
How about the basketball courts? So the basketball court was scheduled to be the next phase, we actually have the basketball goals and baskets, right? But we can't execute that until, well, so the dominos are, the water plant project needs to be finished. When the water plant project is finished, then the playground can be finished. When the playground is finished, and the landscaping for the playground is finished, then the basketball courts can be established in what we purchased, which was the old Mayflower Park. So that design is being looked at and accomplished right now. The cost of that would be so much that I'll have to go out and to bid for that, solicit for a parking, you know, for a basketball thing on that. Estimated cost, high end will be about a hundred fifty thousand dollars, low end maybe seventy thousand dollars.
It's gonna go out towards the road, the old road to, to the bridge?
It is in the Mayflower Park, so, uh.
Is, is there any way of doing anything with that old road?
Uh, the old road will be the walking trail connector between the intersection, at least of the daycare and the sidewalks. And we want it to connect to the old bridge, so that people can use the old trail. And it's the entryway to the park, so we cut that old road in half.
Okay.
So then the landscaping will make it, it has, like, on the other side of the bridge, the old road was cut in half, and then it may just be pedestrian, pedestrian walk.
Need to plant some trees there, if that water building, you know, or parks are nice, the heavy.
Oh, where, where the addition is?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of landscaping in the project, didn't, Colonel?
There was a lot of landscaping in the water plant project, and then the, like you said, the landscaping around what the park will be. And then I'd like to see a shaped structure or two in the park. So I'd say it's quite a waste to be finished, yes.
The, uh, the thing that they built at the water treatment plant, the only thing holding it up now is putting dirt around it and compacting it all. Can that, can that basin be used now?
So we have executed a couple back washes through it for testing purposes, but it has not yet gone through substantial completion, and we have not accepted the project yet. And therefore it has not started the warranty period yet, so we have not accepted the, the project from the contractor yet, so. We have done testing, we have done one or two filter back washes, uh, but there is still more work to be done in the basins, I would say.
Oh, there is, in the basin, I, I didn't, I thought maybe it was finished.
It's not a hundred percent finished, there's still blacktopping to be done, there's a couple stamp posts to be put in, I mean, I think it's relatively minor. The last project update I received on Monday, within thirty days, we should have substantial completion and a new work acceptance. And therefore we have a warranty period again, and the project, the project will be completed and then get some landscaping.
Cause that, that was supposed to be done, like, in November or December, it was looking towards the weather. So we're, deal six months and it's not. Just thinking, when I go by there, it's like, they're not doing anything. Maybe they are. Are they hauling dirt?
Four hundred load to the soil.
Were they putting the dirt?
Ramp, access ramp to the basins most of the.
Oh, so are they putting dirt from somewhere else there?
The soil that was on site was not meeting the compaction standards, and so the dirt that we contracted for is meeting the standards, but we can only put it on about eight inches at a time, and it needs to be compacted and tested, and it won't hold the load for the trucks. And anyway, it's a long process, if you will, you know? Eventually, it will be blacktopped, and it'll hold the weight of the water and the loaded trucks, and remove the, the waste material.
And then after all that's completed, and all the shed, picnic shelter, I guess we'll call it, will then be able to be used?
Well, we have a lot of fencing to put up, we have a lot of landscaping to do, and the picnic shelter can be reestablished, and the pathway and trail behind the water treatment facility can be established. Connecting that to the current bridge and pedestrian walkway, and recreating all the landscaping on the side. And the final piece will be the basketball court, if I find the money for it.
But get the basketball court in that conversation, we have the money for everything else.
Correct.
Oh, that's, that's good. Um, what about another project, you all?
Well, I have a couple questions for you, um, Dirk, I know you mentioned the, the money that Hillary and Russell mentioned, um, and at one point, like, I think in an email you had mentioned that there would be, like, um, some, some efforts to allocate some of those funds towards, like, Dudley and Montrose Streets, that area. And I know, like, your resident mentioned, like, maybe dumping some of the dirt, I don't know, so is that, is that part of the plan for the, the funds allocated?
Uh, no, that was, uh, the, so this bad dirt that can't be used in the compaction soil around the water treatment facility is mounted up behind it. So when the, when the ramp gets finished, and the amount of soil that is needed and used around the water treatment facility, and what's needed and left for landscaping, the remainder of that dirt, my goal is to physically move that dirt down to Dudley and Montrose and help build up the retaining, I don't know what we would call it, levee, something behind, uh, Brad's house, there, can be replaced with one. But that is the dirt that I plan to do that, so, uh, no expense really required, just us loading it in, or dump it, or something like that, it's public work.
We have, like, the woods and house, versus.
Woods and house.
Yeah, okay, so moving the dirt from the, the park, okay.
And now, and now, now, worst case scenario is all that dirt is used, then I don't have any dirt for that. So that would require a different solution, and if I had to then buy dirt, or rock, or something like that, now we're getting into a different category. Then I would have to potentially seek funding if I had to buy stuff. I'm just still, I believe I still will have the ability to use, if you will, this, um, dirt that is not able to be compacted to the, to the level that it needs to be compacted at the water treatment facility. I, I anticipate having quite a bit of that remaining, and that being able to be used throughout the, the, but again, this was supposed to be accomplished by last November.
Yeah.
I told the residents down there that I would do this, I still plan to do it, and I never told them the time, and that's the reason I never gave them the time.
Yeah, well, I, I actually spoke with some of them, they, they were, they were just bringing it up in another conversation, and they said, they know these things same time, so they, they were super entertaining already. Without that sidewalk.
Yes, please do.
Yeah, and then the other question is, forgive me if I should notice, but I had a, I was at an appointment recently and speaking with someone, and she asked about, um, like, the, the camera with the flashing light, she said it's at Penco, and, or we talked about Penco, and I thought of that. So what does, what is the purpose of that camera, cause I, I told her, I said, I honestly, I don't, I don't know, I need to.
So Chief and I, right, we have really a plan for camera systems at all of the egress and ingress points for the town. And the majority of that is, that camera footage allows us to basically cut down on high-speed chases and be able to pinpoint vehicles if there is an occurrence, right, on those intersections, and if we're not immediately there. So let's say something occurred at the daycare sign, and all we're told is that a vehicle execu, you know, exited down Bullet Bill Drive toward Penco. They can go left, right, and get on four sixty, do this, we don't, we're not there. So we now have the ability to at least know and find them, and not be on a wild goose chase. If there is a code whatever out there for searching for a vehicle, we have some ability to, to do this. So it's, it's eyes for us to help us find things, uh, you know, lessen the amount of man-hours, lessen the danger in, uh, the police officers.
Andy, I can give a good example, that actually occurred yesterday, um, Bluefield West has these cameras installed throughout their jurisdiction. Um, they don't face the same restrictions we do as far as how we have to mount them, we can't put them on power poles as they can in West Virginia. But that's not my point, the point is, um, there was a trailer and a tractor with a tractor on a stone, um, through these camera systems, we tracked it down in a matter of hours, which direction it went, um, the type of truck that had pulled up, took the trailer, and so, so it's just a force multiplier for, you know, police officers, you can type in, say, white truck, and it'll pull up every white truck that's passing in front of those cameras, so it just cuts our investigation time almost ninety-eight percent. So that's the purpose of it, safety, security, and, um, investigation. And every city in the Commonwealth or through the United States, you know, they have a very, when you have a robust surveillance system, your crime decreases dramatically, and your crimes are solved, you know, probably four times faster.
Well, thank you, and the, the person that asked, she, uh, she was under the impression it had something to do with, like, um, speeding or stopping at the stop sign, I said I didn't think that was the case, but, um, and I don't, and, and she was also asking, and, you know, I don't know, she was concerned, cause she has, um, issues with, um, seizures, and she asked if the flashing lights, she was a little nervous about that. She, you know, she came at it with, you know, I'm always scared I'll get pulled over, and, you know, she suffers with seizures and, like, the lights from being pulled over would, um, is, are there, is that a valid concern, are there flashing lights and seizures?
Not twenty foot up in the air, I wouldn't think so, I mean, and maybe if you climb the ladder, you're scared of them, but, uh.
I, I've never seen the flash, the flashing lights, the, their Penco camera, I've never noticed them.
Yeah, they're, they're red and blue flashing lights.
You like that school teacher, didn't see any of them?
Well, my point is, uh, I mean, it's not even, I wasn't obvious, cause me and Drew, I drew them out of the mouth, so, I'd have to really look for them.
Yeah, that, that flash.
Did you get the guy with the, uh, trailer and tractor that was stolen, did we get it back?
Hmm.
Wow, it was Mr. Scarborough one.
Yeah, it ended up in West Virginia, but, like I said, it, you know, we had no idea which direction, we wouldn't have no idea which direction it went or anything without, you know, video surveillance.
That's fantastic.
Thank you, bud.
Sure.
We've.
It isn't monitor, it isn't, you know, we, we don't sit there and watch it, and if somebody blows the stop sign, it's not used.
You, you can't enforce, you could not enforce a stop sign violation by that camera, that's not intended the purpose of it.
We were hoping that in the near future, have more cameras throughout town for the police department, we budgeted so much each year to try to do that.
Well, you said every main, in, ingress and egress is our main, I mean, Shane's and I are looking at the overall security situation, that's our main intent. And we have a few other places that were in the past, high-crime areas, and some other issues. If we would have had a camera nearby the previous shooting incident, we probably would have had a much different outcome. So there are things that we believe that we need to do for the security of our, of our.
I don't know, we had a shooting incident, maybe it was just, maybe a break.
It's been a month, so we're going.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah, okay. Any other?
Bluefield College property, Colonel, uh, will we move something?
Bluefield College property, that, uh, deed should be executed and recorded this week. So we should be the owners of it here, as far as that, any tenant. I, I don't have any information on that, uh, I do have, now that we are, or as soon as I plan to get a copy back from the registrar's office that says we are the owners of the property, I plan to send the, uh, franchise in question, uh, let them know that, and some of them that we are the new owners, and see if that stirs any rumors.
Okay, how about the downtown, uh, in movement on, um, in the buildings, and there's quite a few vacant properties. I wish the ice cream store had the, uh, support that the fish store had.
I wish the ice cream store had the support that the fish store had, who does, I thoroughly enjoyed going to Heaven's Sweets.
You know, she never, she, uh, you know, Sharon said it was never an issue with the patron, she was always, she unfortunately had other, other issues. But, um, the Graham, old Graham Jewelry Store, right, we are now, we now have three, three, two, two grants and a, and a third application into a foundation. If, if we received both grants and the foundational money, I believe we could receive around seven hundred thousand dollars. And if we received that money, then the Graham Jewellies, old Graham Jewelry Store building could be renovated and positioned for a new business multiple. So I'm looking forward to that, the IDA is poised to execute that if those grants come to fruition. And it starts with the purchasing of the Graham Jewelry Store building. We're poised on that, we've done the phase one, is that right? Phase one environmental study on that, little to no lead content in the building, and minor asbestos, six-by-six floor tiles, so really little to no environmental concerns in the old Graham Jewelry Store building. So fortunately, when the robotics took out the flooring and most of the paint and most of the upstairs, it actually eradicated most of the environmental concerns in the building, so we had a little four yard. Um, we are, I'd say within the next few weeks, we should have the sale of the Graham Jewellies, uh, Graham, Bank of Graham building accomplished. Again, that's an eighty-eight issue there, the sale of that, and then hopefully assume the renovation of Graham, Bank, Bank of Graham.
Into what?
Uh, the upstairs will become office spaces, and the downstairs is supposed to be renovated and restored and made into some type of community center or a free space, open space for either a different business or, you know, just.
An event space.
Well, we, the IDA currently owns, uh, we, we, I hesitate to say until it's executed. A fairly prominent business within the town is looking to expand and, and put their office businesses in the upstairs. And so I'm really hopeful that this will be a very good, um, project. I really think this will be a really good thing, and we have the opportunity then to bring, I can't remember the exact number, the high end would be twenty-five employees, but I don't think they would all fit up there, so I would estimate around ten employees could now be operating in the upstairs office spaces, and that would be ten more people hopefully eating and using the shops downtown and, and being downtown. They currently don't work there, so I think it would be a fantastic addition to the downtown. So I'm really hopeful that that will take the next. Well, was it Dairy Queen, you're right, it's in private hands, you know, it's for sale. I really don't have any update on that, it's a private, private issue, Mr. Dash is, that person, his, his, uh, his baby, so I don't have any really comments on that, I don't know.
I had, I'm not going to be able to talk to my wife to catch it. Don't you have Krispy Kreme donuts that you work around here? I think, I think if you got a Krispy Kreme donut in this town, I think we'd just clean it up. I know there was a guy in Parisburg that was gonna do the Krispy Kreme. Went all the way through it, and he was telling us at the car lot, the profits, Asher, no.
Didn't the fast food restaurant partner?
Uh, McDonald's.
It was in Corley.
Uh, Corley.
Corley, I think, that's where this.
I think they quit, didn't they?
Yeah, I think they said it wasn't turning properly.
But, you know, you have one of them, turn that red light on, people come around, I just think, if I was younger, I'd tell you, I'd jump off over that. It would almost be like a Fanny Barba, so.
It's like about that, right.
You know, we've had two donut shops, Intimans come in, uh, Dr. Schuer's, white, but the donuts were.
Lamar's.
Lamar's, that's what it was.
Yeah, and it, it was great, I mean, they, it was played out nice and everything, and, yeah, that's, that's the.
And, uh, then we had one downtown, but people, people aren't gonna pay six or seven dollars for a donut. You know, Krispy Kreme's got up to, I don't know, twelve, fourteen dollars a dozen, maybe more than that. And there's one down at Virginia Tech, I am believing, and it's in a little dicky-doo, old-timey gas, like Garnet's place.
Isn't that Carol Anne's?
Ca- what I'm calling, Carol, I tell you, if you don't get there before twelve o'clock, they're gone. Danny Smith says, every time he goes to Blacksford, he calls her and tells him what he wants, because he knows when he gets there, if he doesn't, then none will be any, and I, I just thought.
I mean, there's the other, definitely a few little things, I mean, the bakery, uh, ice cream shop, uh, there, there, that's, we're missing that other.
Don Harris is building the place, was going to own the bakery, um, and that's why they bought it, tried to renovate it and all. Then a family member got sick, and they, they had to leave. And so that's, that's why that fell sheep, it's a fair good at it, but, um. Yeah, there you go.
I'm, I'm working on something else.
Yeah, I know, but it's.
No, 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 here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I've got gears turning, you know what I mean?
I've got to tune his whistle a little bit, I've been buying fuel there for twenty years, I guess. And they never did sell a lot of gas, never, it was in gas, go there now, you're waiting in line, it's amazing.
Trying to be aggressive.
If they're the cheapest gas anywhere around them, they buy a tremendous amount.
Right, yeah.
I need to get us some racing gas. They even have hundred percent gas, but they don't have racing fuel.
I can get you some, okay?
I think it's a one-ten.
Yeah, one-ten.
It's a one-ten.
Yeah.
But, but it's really turned into something nice, it really truly has.
I know, we do annex it out.
And, uh.
We need to annex it for the town, yes.
Yeah.
Listen, I, I think we, we should annex that out there and bring it in.
Well, I, you know, I, I have said for several years, in Bluefield, Virginia, with annexed all out there, pick up those eight or nine thousand houses out there, they use all our infrastructure, they use all of our stores, they use our fire department.
Who picks their trash up?
Most of the plus.
I mean, and let me ask you this, Colonel, is, is that something that we could do and make money on that?
Um, honestly, I haven't studied it, I, I don't know the number of houses.
There's, I mean, there's a lot, I don't know exactly, but I, I know that if, if you did need garbage pickup.
We'd have to have, and do analysis to see if, we'd have to add a truck, add labor, add people, and, I don't know.
I know, I'm, I'm, I just, I didn't have to ever consider or look upon.
I, I was told, uh, I mean, James, you.
Well, James, what do you, what do you think?
We, we never service outside corporate limits, that's something we, we never have done that as far as garbage pickup. We've never studied.
The extra, I mean, additional income that it, that it would create, you know, and, and constant income, you know.
Then this part.
And actually, revenue.
Just sell to.
They think we're paying forty-five dollars.
So, so we could.
They pay about thirty thousand dollars for snow, everybody, well, didn't it?
Yeah.
What's another day?
On the tax, the tax base, I mean, would be something to look at, I mean, I think that's interesting. Uh, I think that the residents there really should be the ones to be actual, I guess it's going to be, I don't know. That issue should really look harder to see the amount they pay for snow, trash, water, and see, you know, paying town taxes and, uh, and our, our fee for garbage can't be, I guarantee that. And our water rates, I think they, 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 they should be petitioning us to be annexed, I think, but I don't know if they don't really know.
You know, one time we brought up the, or we didn't, I wasn't involved, but the, uh, personal department things. Did we ask, address that or look into that sometime back?
For years, I kept trying to get James to help me, uh, take off the personal property tax. And six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I think, isn't about the money that we, the income we would lose.
No.
It wasn't that much, yeah.
Oh, okay, but.
But then, but then I said, well, can we just put a flat rate, if you own a car, this much, a truck, this much, motorcycle, and say, didn't you say there's something about the code of Virginia, you can't do that?
Yeah, it's code, uh, we're, we're restricted to what we can do as far as our wage structure. But we do get a grant, the personal property tax relief, we get a hundred and eighty thousand state or a year for charging for taxes. So if we eliminate the taxes, then we could lose that hundred and eighty thousand a year.
So we, we could, we could reduce that, I mean, the reason, like, I'm packaging this whole thing up, uh, because then you would, you would want, I mean, the people like in, say Deerfield, I mean, it, you know, just use this as an example, you know, it would be a huge incentive to want to be part of that town.
Yeah, we can, I mean, we could.
And traffic, the water, and package this whole thing, and not to mention to other areas and everything that would, you know, just another, you know, I think we could really, you know, market this, I mean, if it was done right, and, and to a lot of areas, I mean, it's a beautiful area, and people that want to get out of these crime-riddled cities and stuff that's out of hand, and what's going on in these, you know, places, I believe would be a great option, you know, so that's what I was looking, so is that, is that a possibility? Can you say we lower that?
We could reduce.
And still, can still get that?
Yes.
I mean, reduce our tax rate still, so you could. So, okay, so we could do that, so what, what kind of shortage would we be up against?
Depending on how, unless we decrease it.
Oh, okay, I got you, so is that something we can maybe put together, Colonel?
Certainly. Yes, and then we, uh, I think we're sixteen, seventy-five?
That was a property, sixty cents per hundred.
Sixty cents per hundred.
Now, the county's two dollars per hundred, so we're pulling up the third, what the county rate is.
Okay.
The, uh, the problem with that out there, that's been forever, maybe we could get the legislature to help us change. The board of supervisors has a rule, they have to approve any annex that you, or any. And their rule is, if everybody's not for it, we're not gonna let you do it. Well, there's not gonna be a, again, for it. So I think if you changed the, uh, got the legislature to change and say to the board supervisors, if the town wants to annex, they can, uh, because you'll, and you, I mean, a lot of people out there, Craig Nash, who's up there, they badly come into the town. And, uh, but a lot of them will say, no, why, why I bought, so I wouldn't have to pay town taxes.
Yeah, it's a hundred percent of anything, you're never gonna get it.
You're never gonna get it, yeah, and, uh, I, I think, did, did we look into that once before, and Kelly said, they're not gonna do that.
Yeah, we had a lot of resistance from Deerfield.
Yeah, and, and you, you know, nobody wants to pay anymore, I mean, that's normal. But, as I said to Craig Nash, and he said, my wife and I'll go door to door to get this done, they use our stores.
Right, I mean.
And there's more kids out there than there is anywhere else.
I, I agree.
Uh, our police department goes out there, they don't control it, a lot of stuff that happens, they go. The fire department goes all the time.
And let me ask you that, so, I mean, Colonel, how does that work? Like, there's an issue in there, I mean, I'm all about.
Well, fire, fire is a deal that is made with the county.
No, not fire, but I mean, even police.
Uh, chief, I mean, the jurisdiction falls to the sheriff.
Yeah, that's sheriff's office, I mean, if they request assistance, we can assist them.
We have, uh, mutual aid agreements, they have to ask for help. It does fall within our fire jurisdiction.
I get it.
We don't do the trash, we don't have water in Deerfield.
Would, would the water be less?
Uh, I'm not sure the P S H rate, honestly, I don't.
Okay.
They're, they're paid a twenty-five percent surcharge for water out there, aren't they? I think they are.
Yes.
I'm going to go with Craig Nash.
James, you said yes?
Yes, they are, they, they, the ones that, that are outside of corporate limits, at-town water, paying a surcharge.
Okay.
I, I just, you know, when you drive out there, and, you know, there's a lot of houses, and, and it's Bluefield, Virginia.
Yeah.
But we get nothing out of it.
I mean.
And, and that's.
But our water stops right before you get to Wright Valley Road.
Uh-huh, okay.
We don't, that's as far as we get.
But, you know, if we want to cut personal property taxes, we gotta replace it with money.
I get that.
Uh, and the only way you can replace it with money is get more business or raise a rate of some kind.
Well, and that's, that's the other thing I wanted to do too, is, is more business, if we ever considered another economic, uh, development person that we had at one point, when Jim Spencer was here, since he's left, I know he's still, uh, IDA, but just, just someone that that's their job.
There, there is one in Tassie, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, I know.
Economic Development guy.
Yeah, there is.
For Tassell County.
Yeah, it's his county, yeah, they like him a lot.
But does that, does that weight over for us, or do we?
It, it does, yeah, he's, he's, uh.
We need our own.
I'm not gonna say no, nothing like that, but.
I mean, you know, if somebody who's going after it all the time, I mean, I think these guys.
That time, because we're pretty good about helping us with it.
Well, especially with grant funding, what becomes available here, Ashley Harris are always great to let us know what's available. And when we have people who are interested in businesses, um, in town, we also send them to Ashley or to Tim Danielson, and they are fantastic about helping them decide what they might be eligible for, whether it's, um, one thing that's on the table quite often is VSCITA, so if you're a startup, you're eligible for ten thousand dollars, and you have to go through the Tassell County IDA to be, uh, you present your business plan, and if you're approved for that, or if they, they kind of give you that recommendation, uh, to move forward through the, um, through VSCITA. And then after you've been open for about a year, if you plan to expand, and I know, um, just thinking about my time at the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, I know one business that really took advantage of it is Fisher Company, the barbecue place near the Crab Orchard Museum. So they received the ten thousand dollars as an initial startup, and then when they were open, about a year later, they were eligible for an expansion of another ten thousand, and they were able to enlarge their kitchen. Uh, so, um, they, they're very, very resourceful as far as knowing what's available and who's eligible for it. So, and as a matter of fact, Ashley just texted me, or emailed me last week, and she had a meeting today with Pimco. So she's actually starting to, uh, make connections with our business owners in our area and start to develop a little relationship to get to know the businesses in Bluefield, Virginia. And she had invited me, and she invited Mr. Hanson as well to be a part of those meetings. Today, obviously, we couldn't make that meeting, but, um, she has included us as she starts to get to know the businesses in Bluefield, Virginia.
The one thing. I mean, what I'm kind of looking at is, and I understand what Laura was saying there about the grant money, you know, what's available. I'm, I'm talking about somebody who goes outside the area to bring it back to this area, bring, bring stuff, new, new stuff, you know, something innovative, or something different. And then we kind of start repositioning ourselves in town as some of these other ones, like, you know, like I said, North Carolina, it's got a little college town, it's got touristy things, and hiking, biking, doing something, you know, along those lines, with somebody going out and bringing business in here, you know. I understand the county puts it out, spreading out through the, potentially through the county, and I'm just talking about hunting guys, just for us.
One of, one of the toughest things to deal with. One of the one of the toughest things to deal with, and it is the number one thing. There is no workforce. The guy that uh signals, he's bringing them from Lewisburg, he can't beg anybody to.
I mean, it is, it's it's just the way what's happening, this this country's got sorry.
Yeah, the the, everybody you talk to cannot get any workers. Uh, it, I've never seen it so bad. The uh, we were going through Wendy's the other day, Dawn and I were sitting there, and I said, do you see anything unusual? Of course she did. I said, well, look back at them, every employee here, we're probably younger than them, and we're sad.
I was just gonna say, you gotta say, an older working.
Yeah, it's an older work, and they're the seventy and eighty-year-olds, better go to work.
That's working, because those.
We just came, get people, and I don't know how.
Well, whatever happened to Mr. COVID?
That's what happened, that's exactly what it was.
And now, you you know, you you can't get any money. I mean, I've known people in the law care business that are willing to pay twenty dollars an hour, and they can't get back to work. And it used to be that way, it was just, you used to get, you'd get twenty, you'd get right up, right today, but now you can't. Now, okay, is there any other ongoing projects that you wanna ask the Colonel about? I mean, there there's a tremendous amount of stuff going on in town that maybe we don't know a hundred percent about. I mean, there really is, there's.
Well, I agree.
There is a whole lot of stuff, and um, the question is asked. Back up three to five years, and tell me if the town looks better now than it did three to five years ago. Everybody that I asked said, oh, there's an effect, how much nicer it looks, how much cleaner it looks. Uh, you know, getting rid of dilapidated houses. Uh, there was one over by the intermediate school that I think everybody dropped their kids off there, it was one that tore down forever and ever. Well, it's tore down, and the one on the other side of the school will go up for auction in September, I believe, is it?
Uh, Taxville, I believe, yes.
Yes, I guess.
And and it'll be bought by somebody and tore down.
Yeah, the school.
Now, the school would like to have it, to increase their parking. And I hope they get it, or I hope a developer will get it. Get rid of that tree that's there, carry the house down, it'd be a beautiful piece of land, the two or three apartment building there, two or three people live. Uh, but the school needs it for parking, back, and I hope they get it, but um, you know, just just look around, drive through town, drive through the neighborhoods and all. You see how much different it is.
Back to Mr. Noel's point, and um, earlier, I don't think, I don't think we fully answered his question about I D A, E D A type person, I don't really know the answer to it, but like, C N M Trucking, I think, was one of our greatest current little coups, but it wasn't outside the area business, but it was a business that the county quite frankly dropped the ball. And it became pretty expensive for them to put in a, put in their shop off four six. And thankfully for that, uh, then, you know, what we were able to accomplish within the town, to incentivize them to be here, move that business within the town around us. Even with the additional town taxes and what they anticipated being the rigmarole of moving within the town. Actually, I believe if you asked them, uh, it was a quite simple process for them to purchase property from us, to get permits from us, build a building from us. Uh, and wait to work with them. And they were offered property in Land County also, and to move out there, but they didn't wanna do that, so. I think it's a really good success story, and it it worked within the within the parameters that we currently have in place. And honestly, uh, yes, it would be great to have somebody going out there trying to shepherd businesses into town, but the reality is, the town really owns such minor properties that it is really the private businesses that have a majority of the property. We're just talking about Mr. Dash's building, the vacancies in the Walmart shopping center, the other buildings, they're not town-owned. C N M Trucking, I think, is a great example of what the town did own and how we transferred it to a private business. The Bank of Bram is town-owned, we're transferring it to a private business, oh. Uh, the jewelry store is privately owned, we are going to attempt to acquire and then attempt to find, I think we have a lead on a private business. So, what the town currently owns, I think we're doing a fairly good job of transitioning it into a pretty private name. The I D A actually is uh sold uh, three uh, three properties, the old Christian Temple Mission, the house next to it, and I think we'll have one twenty-nine depot street sold uh after we tear that house down. So those will be three properties that are, the Bank of Bram will be number four, and um uh, what we sold to C N M Trucking is number five. So that's five, there's five properties that have been sold or transitioned or hopefully transitioned or sold.
And the Vision Center.
The William Vision Center was also sold into private hands, and now it's a go see for the. So, um, so I think to your point, the the broader context is the private locations, right? So, um, I think there's a, there's a bigger discussion we have in the Chambers of Commerce and and even even in the Main Street, not the Main Street. Virginia Avenue, old downtown, they're supposed to have this little business conglomeration thing, you know, that are business, I don't know what it's called.
The Downtown District, something, the D D C.
Downtown, D D C.
D D C.
So they're supposed to have a thing. And these things are supposed to, you know, do do these things, and garden businesses, and the developers are having it. And they have, so right now, I think the I D A is on a better path, to the point, you know. I do not want to hire another full-time person, I don't have the budget for it, I don't have the money for it. I'm really on a hiring freeze, if you will, minus vacancies that we have, we have a vacancy in the police department. We have some part-time workers that we brought on, they're going through their probationary period, they may become full-time workers, they want sanitation or public works department, but I don't necessarily want to create a new job and hire any new full-time employees, at least in this this current facility here. So a couple new things within the I D A, the new blood that we've all appointed to the I D A, I think are making some of the changes we need within the properties that we own, but I see a majority of the issues, again, like Mr. Dash's property, uh, I I don't know how to help him own it. Or help market that property to to how to sign the names. And I think the county reps can do that, now maybe, you know, maybe there's a way to assist in the county reps, and maybe the county is is getting more interested in in knowing our inventory of what we have here. I did reach out to another entity, I was hoping that I could get Virginia Tech to buy on a piece of property here, but they they currently denied it. Uh, they they aren't looking to expand, so that that did not pan out. And then, of course, that, you know, the franchise that we're seeing. I think we have a lot of irons in the fire, so to speak, two or three of them clearly come to hit.
And Chopper's going to uh, take the old car wash, that's where the tobacco shops will go, that's that Walmart now. And those three, three or four businesses that are supposedly gonna be occupied by two or three restaurants. And then, uh, for the Italian restaurant is, there's, I think, he told me that that permit's already been issued for them to do a hamburger, some kind of sandwich shop.
What kind of place?
Uh, cause of, uh, what's that place, Italian building?
Oh, where it used to be.
Where that used to be?
Yeah, something's there.
Does somebody supposedly is going in there. One project that I know the Colonel's interested in, and Chopper's really interested in, is that corner where uh, Donnie mentioned, it's across from Shell Station. Donnie wants something Chopper wants, and Chopper wants his. And I've talked to Chopper a bunch, and I said, man, just get on it, get on it, let's make something happen, because that's a great corner for something. I, Chopper says he has a ten, I swear to believe he said it was sheets.
I don't know about that, they said a couple years ago, if they if they weren't invested.
Yeah, yeah, uh.
Yeah, sheet said they weren't invested.
Oh, okay, well, he.
Two years ago.
He uh, he says he can get somebody there, uh, he just ain't got the problem. Him and Mitch had haven't got together, he he wants the building that Chopper has, with that crazy signing, the tobacco and all that junk's in there. And Chopper wants his, so they're, they can make the trade. Now, I I I think it will, but do you all realize there is no auto parts business in Bluefield, Virginia?
I I don't understand.
No, and he said, where the restaurant is beside, it used to be B B and Z Bank, there's a restaurant there now. Chopper had that bought like three times, and every time he'd go to closing, the guy raised the price. And Chopper finally just said, you know, I'm done. But he was gonna buy that and tear it down, and he had an auto parts business that already signs, it used, you build it, we'll leave it. He can't, he can't get it bought for some reason. So I I will say this. Chopper does more for the town of Bluefield, Virginia on economic development than anybody. I mean, he's he's a dog on a bone to do stuff like that, and we're thankful that he is. I mean, he puts his own money out there and does these things, and has for years and years and years. Um, so, uh, anyway, I'll talk on. Uh, but do you have any more ideas or? Something, I mean, you know, an an idea has to start, sometimes it takes a long time to go forward with it. The overall picture of Bluefield, Virginia, I won't say who it was, but they said, you all have got a good thing going. You've got this, you've got this, recreation is really good, um.
Well, Ron just left, ran off.
Quit.
Never mind.
Uh, I will report.
It was, I think, I I agree with, I mean, all that, it's a great town, great community, uh, there up here, family has. But we're also in a declining population, but I don't I don't like that trend, you know, so I mean, that's why I think we need to.
Well, I will tell you this.
About maybe turn the uh, aggressive level up just a little bit of how we're gonna look at bringing people in, because if you look at that, that report for and that that graph is going downhill.
You know, even Dawn and I, in the last couple of weeks, have said, we need to sell the, we need to move to Ramo. Winston said, we have no healthcare, we have none. I bet we medical might go different, but we have none. They they took it all away from us, they're putting a band-aid up here, up there, and all they're gonna do is put you up there and get you ready, then put your name and go to Princeton. That's all that mess, it's it's not a hospital. But we don't have healthcare, and all of us have to leave to get healthcare. That's one of the things that is a reason we have to decline.
It is, I mean.
But because people won't come, or there's no town there.
Exactly right, I mean, that's that's extremely important, but but we're gonna have to start talking to other people or, you know, this uh legislators and the state.
Corrillion would love to build a hospital on four six. We've been talking about that, I'm on the board there, we've been talking about it for four years. They would love to put a hospital in Bluefield. Well, if they put a hospital in the Bluestone, all the medical offices are gonna come. And it it's a big, big deal, but uh, they're having the same problems as everybody else, they're building that thing.
So they they, they're interested, they are, but they're not?
They're interested in a hundred and thirty-bed hospital, is what what they wanna do, it's mega buildings. And they're they're.
They build it?
Yes, they they have to, they built it, we want it, we want it. And we've been trying and trying and trying and trying, but it's a, it's it's a big process. Um, everything that they tried to do, we tried to get the surgeons in, that bunch of friends, they're never gonna do anything with that. So let some of these doctors come to Bluefield, Virginia, Doctor Blais, I had to go to Baker, it's not that far, but he's right here.
It has to, yeah.
It is, and and uh, Doctor Edwards tried to get, to do his thing over there.
Donnie, I served on the board for Clinch Valley, they also tried to get the building to soil.
Yeah, and and and, so I I'm saying, maybe we need to just forget their building and do something else. The riches have, I think, it's seventy-four acres, there's plenty of room to do something, plenty of room, and uh.
I mean, even with Bluestone, there's nothing that's being done.
Yeah, I mean, the Bluestone would be a great place for a hospital, but I don't know how, I really don't know how you get any more activity going, I I really don't. I guess, I guess you gotta get legislators to come and try to push the ordeal.
I'm with you, that's that's where I'm going, is going with that, you know, is that, it's out of my wheelhouse.
He he's been going, I can tell you that, I know, I know for a fact, the people he's been talking to, and he talks with the heavy hitters. He don't go with some little foodie person. Uh, I I'm a little surprised at uh, the ice cream shop in Bluefield, Virginia, that somebody had jumped on that, because when Mr. Graham had it, it was scary.
It was multiple people tried to reach out to him for for months and a year, trying to do something, and couldn't even get a phone call back.
Yeah, he's different.
Could not even get a return phone call.
Yeah, so if we do the Don Harris building, hey, bakery, ice cream, one of the things, I don't know how you feel about this, but a lot of people are saying we need like brick house pizza and beer. Now, I don't drink, so then I could care less, but the younger generation, like my daughter and her husband, they drink a beer or wine when they go to places like that, and we don't have anything to get them there.
And especially with the, I mean, not just for the beer, but, you know, the colleges.
Yeah.
Yeah, two colleges, and and I mean, other things to do for the schools, and stuff, kids and people here, and stuff, it's uh severe lack.
And that's something, the contact that he's got is interesting and back, which would be great, because we roll the streets at five o'clock. You know, we're trying to have car shows, we're trying to have things to bring people downtown and create an environment. Uh, and it's it's working some, but if we had a few islands there for the people that are, I mean, look, I I look at it this way. If you've never been to Mayberry, North Carolina, where the Andy Bridge and stuff is, that's a little pubic, nothing. Go out on a Saturday, there'll be fifty thousand people there. We could do the exact same thing, and we're trying, believe me, they they work hard on on that, they they really do, so.
The Lumber Building is for sale too.
That guy died.
Uh, yeah, I think so, yeah, somebody called him, that was related to him, and said it's uh, it's for sale. Uh, yeah, I think so, yeah, somebody called him, that was related to him, and said it's, uh, it's for sale. Somebody still working, but I know it's for sale.
Hope, is somebody still running it?
I don't know, I, I was, I don't know.
I don't understand your opinion, take it over.
The way it's, the way that, the way it is, it is.
Is there where police officers did their cleaning?
Bluefield cleaners, yeah.
So they must still be, somebody's still operating with.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I was there the other day, Mr. Dillon is still there.
I thought he died.
But he has help.
Yeah, he, he's completely impaired, he had a stroke and several things, his wife and his nephew are still running the business.
Yeah.
From what I understand.
Well, he did die, that's his thing.
Yeah.
But this new company that's going into the, uh, Bank of Bram building, they're, they're aggressive, they're very aggressive. And I think it's the beginning of the, something really good, really good, so.
Good.
Anybody? Only I, I came up with some bridge.
Hey, I'm out of ideas for today, okay, the next idea is, is to be, uh.
You know, let's be careful not to say we're not doing anything, if you, if you have any questions at all, just call the Colonel, come over here and spend a little bit of time, he can steal you in, take you and show you.
Hey, I'm not gonna talk for the night about the chair that's going to the mountain, to the pipe and the bike and trail, that'll, that'll be for another day.
Wouldn't that be something, uh, there's a man doing something.
Still working on that.
The, there's, you know, the guy who's helicopter, he's doing that, that's on his property.
On his house.
Yeah, they're putting a house up there for his son, and they're gonna put that trail, trail lift up there, and that's just for him, but like I said, we've got a lot of possibilities here, I mean, discovered.
Megan, do you have anything else you'd like to?
Not this time?
Fourth thing, fourth thing, off her side abandoned her tonight, so.
Okay.
Colonel, do you have anything else you wanna bring up, or you ready for us to quit? Colonel's done, I can see it all over his face.
I will be absent, starting on the twenty-fifth of July, and I'll return to work on the fourth of August.
That's the car show, is it?
Uh, no, sir, it's the, uh, National Live.
Oh, okay.
The car show, I will also be on the seventeenth and eighteenth, that's the National Car. I'll be gone the seventeenth and eighteenth, and the twenty-fifth for the third of August.
Good day.
My duties will be split between James and Oregon.
So another thing.
It's easy to feel, Eric.
Yeah, another thing we will, uh, do in August is the evaluation of the town after, that's, that's the yearly thing, isn't it, Colonel?
It is my, uh, annual report, I'll provide you feedback from my subordinates, and you'll deliberate on how poorly I've done.
We, we always go into executive session and talk about it, you know, we, we've always said, I don't care how good you are, maybe you don't like the fact that he don't call you fifty times a day, or maybe you're mad cause he doesn't, but he don't know if he, he's telling, so we've, we've done that for two years now, I don't know one, we've only done it once, we had to let you get here behind the bell before we could get you, so, uh. Is everybody okay with this closing in here? So I need a motion to adjourn, as Megan makes the motion, a second. As Karen makes a second, all the favors seem to vibe, I say, ah, ah, say, I hope everybody has a good night.